Okay, first on the agenda is the approval of the agenda.
Moved to approve the agenda of the November 20, 2018 regular meeting as presented.
Okay, the motion in the second, all favored by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, all赞成. Next is the approval of the consent agenda items.
To approve the consent agenda items as presented. Second.
The motion in the second, all favored by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Next on the agenda is the public participation. Mayor Haslam.
Should be here if you are.
Yes.
Well, good, thank you, I appreciate the opportunity to address the board here this evening. I'm not coming to you as the mayor of St. Genevieve, well, but as Pastor Paul. And I'm here to try to make the board aware and look for a little bit of help. And we have received some help from the board. We have a, I'm just gonna read a letter that was crafted by Missy Sutton from the hospital and Sandra Bell from the health department. I want to read this letter to the board and everybody in this room should be okay. It's two, it's addressed to St. Genevieve and Valley School Board members. There is an opioid consortium in St. Genevieve, the sheriff's department, the health department, Celebrate Recovery, Hope Church, and the hospital, and a pastoral alliance of local churches working to decrease opioid use and abuse in St. Genevieve County. We meet monthly, we are creating a calendar of worked, a calendar and work to plan and host community education and awareness, and awareness quarterly for the next 12 months. We already started that, we already had one meeting and one presentation was done at First Baptist Church, I believe, last month. Our goals are to bring substance abuse awareness and education to our community through prevention programs and to help those people who are addicted to illegal substances by facilitating treatment and resources. And this has already happened with your group. We would like to invite a representative from each school to participate in our committee. Our opioid committee meets in the hospital boardroom on one Thursday a month at 12:00 PM. And then our pastors, our pastoral alliance meets once a month also in, at the St. Genevieve County Health Department. We have accomplished a decrease in prescriptions and offered community education. Now we feel it is important to expand and work with more community partners. We would appreciate the opportunity to work with you and to share our resource to prevent substance abuse with students in the school districts. Half of all new drug users are under the age of 18. Drug use in young brains, drug use in young brains that are not fully developed result in long-term cognitive and behavioral effects that decrease a person's success in society, which results in a decrease in the ability of skilled workforce and decrease in the success, in success of St. Genevieve. And we hope, and we do have, I believe, a staff member, we got, I got that information from y'all, I appreciate that. And just want to make everybody aware of the problem we have in St. Genevieve. It's, it's, it's a problem. Opioid abuse is a problem, the abuse of opioids. And what I'm encouraged, for the first time in this community, I've been fighting this for several years in, with drug rehab and helping people, but even our hospital admitted that they, they were part of the problem and they've come on board. They, we're handing out too many opioids and it's happening in our community and people are getting hooked on opioids. When they can't get opioids, the next best thing is heroin. Well, heroin laced with fentanyl kills people. And there's been, Eric knows, there's been several drug deaths in our community. And not only, and we can't even keep track of the, 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 the drug overdoses that people live because we're, our ambulance department is carrying Narcan, you know, which is available to help, to, to bring that person back to life. You know, and addiction is, when we look at a drug addict, we, we tend to look at that, huh, I was the same way, that, it's, it's an evil, it's evil, but it's not. It's a disease. We're coming to find out is it's a sickness and it's a disease and it's, it affects a lot of people. And it doesn't, drugs, drugs are not a respecter of persons, can happen to the, to anybody. And it has happened to anybody. I've, I've worked with people that have, that have had back problems and go get opioid and they're hooked. Dentist, they, they, they hand, the dentist hand out more opioids too for pain, and people get hooked on it, young people get hooked on it. And you know what? I've come to realize that we are never ever gonna cut off the supply of drugs. It's coming in, right now, you can go in, in our post office, it's coming through the mail. And it's, it's, it's everywhere. You see trucks, UPS, it's coming, it's coming up the highways. We're never gonna cut it off. We're never gonna cut off the supply of drugs. But what we can do is we can do something about the demand. We can educate, 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 and help people that are on it to get off of it where they don't want it anymore. And when we could, when we do something about the demand, then we'll, we'll stop the flow of it, there won't be a need for it. So, and it's a big battle, and it's gonna be a tough battle, but I tell you what, it's worth fighting because I value life. I value life from the womb all the way to an old person. I don't care, when you die naturally, I value life. A person that is drugs, on drugs and overdosing, I value life. And we all have to value life. In our, in our municipal magazine this week, I received this, St. Charles, they are battling opioid addiction one call at a time. And I want to read you something that they do in their schools and I found it was really interesting. And this is just a part of this, and I'm gonna read a short, short section. It says, Crush is a flagship project, is the county's annual teen drug summit, a gathering of approximately 500, sixth, seventh, and eighth grades, eighth grade students. Where it can't be just effective by doing our DARE program with the fifth graders. We have to get it, we have to train and train. Because we have to educate our kids because if you ask any kid if they find somebody that's doing or know somebody's in drugs in their school, well, what do they do? Well, get away from them, that's what we teach them. That's not the answer, we gotta get them help, they gotta tell the teacher and get them help. So it goes on to say, students selected represent every public school district in the county as well as many parochial schools. Cassidy pitched the idea of showing the students a raw firsthand look at an overdose call. We have, I see, I saw where we do training, we have mock recs where people know what to do and kids, how to handle it, they see that. So now they're doing some initially apprehensive, but ultimately the group decided this would be a powerful takeaway from the students, for the students present. One that would get them talking to their friends back at school. Cassidy solicited the assistance of SCAD College and Adam Herman, who shot and produced a video that opens with audio of an actual 911 call, then transitions to a reenactment of paramedics administering naloxone, Narcan, and attempting unsuccessfully to revive the patient, all while his mother and brother look on. St. Charles County Police Department officers and students in the theatric arts program and St. Charles Community College also participated in. And very effective, when our eyes, we see it, it's real. I've been, I've went and found people that have died, have been actively on the scene when somebody is overdosed. It's, it's ugly. And I've done three funerals of people that overdosed. Again, all I'm wanting to do is, is we need to do a better job of educating. And I, and I hate putting more on the school board, I hate putting more on the teachers, I hate it. But you gotta face it, we're, we live in a broken society, our marriages are, 50% of our marriages are broken. These kids are coming home, mom and dad might be a drug addict. The first responder for a kid coming home that's got a mom on heroin is Narcan. They, they might have to save their dad. Just did a funeral of a, of a student in St. Genevieve that found her dad dead of a whole heroin overdose that lived in Bloomsville, not that long ago. It's a problem. It's a big problem and we gotta fight it. You know, it's difficult and it's overwhelming, but I know we gotta fight it. And I appreciate your help, your support, wanna see, the best way to fight it is, is with our kids. Our kids that can help their friends and give them the help they need. We're gonna stop it? No. But maybe we can, I don't like the scare tactic, but what those drugs do to young minds, it just stops it. It stops the brain right where it is and then you have a person that's 23, 24, that's got a 12 or 13-year-old's mindset. So, appreciate the opportunity to come. We're gonna, you're gonna see more of it. We're gonna have it, try to have the opportunity to have speakers. And I thought the PAC Center would be a great place to do it, but we have to have the opportunity to do it. We have, the hospital just received, how, how much was that grant, Danielle? I mean, how much, how much was the grant? Yeah?
I forget. I don't know. But they're working on a million dollar grant, she said.
A million dollar grant, which is gonna, which is going to give us money to bring speakers in and to help pay for what we want to do. And it's, it's exciting that we're, we're able to do it because our nation has understood that we have a drug, we have a problem with drugs and it's serious. In 2017, 72,000 people died of hair, of drug overdoses. That's a lot of people. That's a ton of people. And, and that number, looking at 28, 2, and even with Narcan and Narcan, it's looking like 2018's gonna be the same. At least it's, it's not up, but that, you can do that with, you can credit that to, to the lifesaving drug. But it taxes our ambulance districts, our police, it taxes everybody, you know, but...
So we're gonna have monthly meetings?
We will, we will have monthly meetings. Their monthly meeting is, will be at the community, at the health center, there's two meetings a month, you know, so. And we're, and we're gonna tackle this thing too, is trying to bring the churches together that, to educate because everybody needs educating. And especially our churches. And our churches, you know, we, we gotta get back to the responsibility of the churches in our community. That's who used to take care of the poor and the needy. And we've let the government do that. Well, guess what? The government, they can't do it. We have to do it. So, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
So, with that being said about drugs, that kind of goes into what I have a concern about. How is it okay, I wanna know how our school board is allowing children to be on sports that are knowingly on drugs? It might not be as severe as opioids, but it's gonna lead to that. I wanna know why nothing is being done with those students.
First of all, if we know they're on them, they're not, they don't fight. If we know.
Okay, if you know. Both these two over here lied to me straight in my face.
We're not gonna get in, we're not gonna get into this, we're not...
Well, then I would like to set up a meeting with you guys privately and them, and I wanna know why it was lied to my face when they heard that a child was on drugs knowingly. They looked at me and my husband and said, "We did not hear that." They were in the same room with us. She had a, quit shaking your head, please. You had a notebook of stuff written.
We're not, we're not gonna do this tonight. If you guys wanna talk, we'll...
Well, I wanna know why, and then there was kids that were sent home that were high and then came back and they were allowed back into school the same day. So I need to know why that is. If we are worried about the drugs in the community and this school is not on board, there's a problem. I don't want my kid to be a statistic because somebody else is doing it or because they see their friends doing it or because the, our school board are allowing that. There's something wrong with this school board, there's something wrong with administration if that is allowing to be happened. If you guys are more worried about your football team, your basketball team, you can stop rolling your eyes, that is very rude.
Well, I'm not rolling my eyes, but I...
You are. I wanna know what is, that's fine. I wanna know what is being done with my child, why the school board is not making room or changes for this. If we know that a child is on drugs, they should be off of everything, they should not be allowed back at school, there should be precautions, there should be steps taken that they don't end up dead on the highway or in a cracked-out hotel room. But nothing's being done. We are allowing these children to walk all over this school board, these teachers, these coaches. It is not okay. There's something corrupt in this town, in this school board, and it's gonna come out. It is wrong.
All right, thank you for your concern.
And there's a lot of people that are gonna be pulling their kid because you guys are dropping the ball on our kids and it is very sad.
You know, you know what's really sad? Is you're sitting here condemning us. We know nothing. We don't know all of this.
You know nothing? I'm not saying you, I'm saying...
And I'm not, and they don't know it all either. But what I'm saying is, you're condemning...
Man, they were in the courtroom, they heard everything that was said in that courtroom. I can go to the courthouse tomorrow and get the written out statements of everything that was said in that courtroom.
We don't, we don't wanna know anything.
But I can bring it to your attention. So what are you gonna do at that time when you had it plain as day in front of you? What is gonna happen then?
When, when are we gonna put this back on the parents?
It is the parent, that is the parent, that is right. That is the parent's job to not have a kid come to school hot. That is. But what it is, when those kids do not have parents that care for them, it's administration that takes them. It isn't, it's the principals that worry about their kids. Yeah, I'm sorry, we come from a broken world, we come from a world that doesn't have God. And we have to be, you have to be the teachers that educate them, we have to have administration. That gentleman right there called my son a retard in eighth grade.
You can join, you're welcome, Pastor Paul would give you, no, she's welcome to join us like at Celebrate Recovery, honestly, because there is, we are trying, I mean, I don't know anything about it.
But no, I'm just saying, teachers are supposed to be there for those kids that don't have parents. You are right, it is the parents' responsibilities, but when those kids don't have parents at home, what are they gonna do? They have no guidance. And that's what they come to school for, is guidance. And you are failing them when you allow them to keep running through that. You were supposed to be counselor, supporter. That is what you guys sign up for as administration and teachers. And this is sad, that this is what this school has came to. I used to be proud that my child went here and now I'm not. And it has nothing to do with anything, it has to do with the drug use. It has to do with the administration dropping the ball on everything.
Does anyone else have anything to say? Okay, we'll move on. And we won't get back to you.
Excuse me, Martha, was this the open session where others can talk yet? She announced that.
Yeah.
I just had one question I wanted to ask really quickly. In the, in the August meeting that I was here, we talked about the 44% increase on taxes from the, if I, if I remember correctly, and I apologize because I don't have the minutes in front of me, so I'm sorry about that. If I remember correctly, it was due to the loss in the wholesome, is that right?
Wholesome.
The wholesome, I'm sorry, I'm saying, and the wholesome money, is that right? So we were, they were, we were losing some bond money and so we were gonna have to do a 44% increase for a million dollar payment that was coming up, is that correct?
This would be on a bond issue, right.
Right, a 44% increase on a bond issue.
We weren't planning on it, right.
So what was the tax increase then that we were talking about in August? On the minutes? Because you guys approved that, do you guys remember that?
Yes.
Somebody remembers a tax increase? I know, we talked about a tax increase in August.
This is a, this is a public comment section where we listen.
Right, okay. So my question, okay, okay, so I'm sorry, so I didn't realize that you guys didn't answer questions.
We can answer you in a letter after.
Oh, a letter afterwards. Oh, okay, so then, so that's a bummer, because I thought this, I apologize, I thought I could ask a question and you couldn't.
It's not an open forum like that.
Okay, well, so I was, the question I was gonna ask then, I will ask this. So, I was concerned with, I know with as much money, the, okay, so, how much money has the, has already, has the district already spent on attorney fees?
That's not, that's something that we're not gonna be able to...
You can't discuss? Okay.
And, and we're not trying to, it's just saying, you're not gonna be able to ask us because we're not gonna be able to talk to you guys about this.
Right, so Steve, that's why, that's, I didn't realize that you couldn't answer me back. Because then I had a follow-up question too. Because like if Beth was, if Mrs. Geisler was to sue the school district, how much further, how much more money would we spend and then would we have to adjust the tax increase as well for that to offset that?
We can't talk about that.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, I have time for one more.
Thank you. My name is Bruce Geisler, I am Beth Geisler's father. Thanks for giving me this opportunity to address you, the board of St. Genevieve School District. My short talk is directly solely to the board, only the board. I understand you can't answer questions. I am a graduate of St. Gene High School, as is both of Diane and my sons, and we're proud of St. Gene, or we used to be. This school offers a great education and great life experiences. Both of our sons went through this school, went on between the two, obtained three master degrees, one has an MBA and one has a licensed architect and practicing architect. They could have never got there without the foundations that was given to them through this school. So this school had a great foundation, and I'm worried about that foundation. My wife, Diane, also worked for this school district for seven years overseeing the school district health, all under a different administration. My family's siblings and their children attended St. Gene High School. My extended family all have been very supportive in St. Genevieve in many ways, I think you all would agree. Whether it was fundraising, whether through sports activities, or anything else, when we were called upon, if one couldn't make it, they found another sibling to make it. And we enjoyed it, we didn't look as a burden. I also speak to you as a taxpaying county resident. I applaud you for giving time to serve the taxpayers of St. Gene County. I also sit on the board and I'm aware firsthand of the personal time and commitments it takes. I also aware of the electric school board's responsibility. Your responsibilities are governed by policies and laws, including state laws. I am also aware your responsibility is to manage the St. Gene School District affairs, including being responsible for school administration, faculty, and their actions. You do not report to school administration, rather, school administration reports to you. Act as I have seen these past five months, plus information forward to my family, shows differently. I am not sure you are managing the administration, but rather being led by the people and by the school administration that you have in charge. Managing is not easy. I know I've been in management for over 30 years. I also recognize most of you have the limited management experience, some none at all. Yet you are responsible to oversee their third highest employer in St. Genevieve County, the St. Genevieve School District. I want to point out that you are responsible for the school district superintendent and the non-experienced assistant. I hope you're leading these two. I hope you don't let a soft voice and a slick haircut dictate your decisions and moves without challenging them as a board should. These folks may have letters behind their names, but they're not your bosses. They have letters behind their names that takes a lot of work to achieve and it is a great accomplishment. There's no doubt in my mind that each one of you could have that letter behind your name, in front of your name, that says, "PhD, if you chose that career path, you could have obtained it as well." The career path you chose didn't require it, as a lot of us didn't. So, I wonder, why do you let people lead and dictate to you, as what has been brought to our attention? And I also wonder if it, if you wouldn't, more people wouldn't have the PhDs if they weren't obtaining those during taxpaying, working hours. I do wonder how that school policy reads. I also want to point out, the school lawyers work for you. You do not work for them. The more lawyers administration keep things stirred up, the more you pay them. I have known most of you personally for many years. I know a couple of your parents really well and I enjoy knowing them. I have worked, I've got to work with some of you and I've actually known some of your children and watched them grow up. In my heart, I really believe you successfully ran for the position you have, elected school board member, to keep the high integrity this school had established and make improvements each year to make this school one of the best of the state of Missouri. Unfortunately, your administration's recent actions have greatly changed that perspective personally, locally, and from across the state of Missouri. With this said, I have many questions that I will start with why. I fully understand you will not be answering my questions at this meeting. Perhaps you will in the future, once you have a change, chance to respond from your heart and conscience. Why? Why is the school district so determined to punish Beth on unproven accusations when in the past this same school district employed, allowed employees to work while they were being investigated and trialed for felonies? Why has this administration basically threatened school employees with no contact with Beth, with Beth threats and mandates? Why is this school board administration so determined to hold back information? Why is this administration recklessly spending money on lawyers' fees when they could wait for the legal trial to play out, then at the same time seek to raid county, raise county residents' taxes on an unfair assumption against one of our county's largest employers and taxpayer? Why, why did the board allow the school administration employee to, to pursue removing my grandchildren from their mother and home? Why? You're responsible, why?
Why?
Why? Why did this board allow today's 5:00 PM meeting scheduled with Beth's attorney and you, the school board, be canceled? We had high hopes things could be worked out. But why was that meeting canceled? On a 24-hour notice? Why did this administration allow a person known to be testing for drug use continue to participate in school sport activities? Now known across the state? Another bad mark for St. Gene High School. Why did your school superintendent and assistant leave the courthouse during Beth's preliminary hearing and make rude, crude remarks towards parents of children enrolled in this school district? Why does this school board allow that behavior? Our taxpayers are watching. Why? Why do school employees, teachers, and administration, currently employees and retired, excuse me, why do school employees, teachers, administrations, currently employed and retired constantly contact family members with awful, awful accusations regarding this administration leadership? Just, it's pathetic that we hear this stuff because our family don't wanna hear it. It's terrible. Why is that? Why have I recently received inquiries from parents considering moving into our county but afraid of what they are being told about our current public school system? Why is that? Why is that? Why have folks employed in neighboring county schools contacted family members asking, "What the hell is going on with the St. Gene School System Administration and Boarding?" Why are your great, and I mean great, teachers, experienced teachers resigning and retiring at early ages and others looking to leave? Why is that happening? Why did a teacher's father contact me and ask me if what he had heard on the way Beth was being treated by her bosses, was, were, was that true? Obviously, I could tell him, I can't respond. This person went on to say he was looking into legality of having a personal camera installed in his child teacher classroom. He made it very clear, he along with others do not trust this administration and felt it would be a waste of time to discuss what the board had directed. That is sad. I tried to get him to come to you and have that discussion. But that, that is sad. I don't believe any of you want, on your record as a school board member, believe me, it would take hours to repeat everything I wish I never heard about this school administration up here. I actually pray that this is not true. I actually try to take a positive tone, suggest they contact you board members with concerns. Again, I want to thank you for allowing me to speak and ask my questions. As mentioned early, earlier, I fully believe you are serving on St. Genevieve Public School as a representative of the St. Genevieve County taxpayers, who elected you to protect the integrity and grow our school system. I ask each of you to look at yourself and ask, "Am I accomplishing that goal?" I also ask if you were in Beth or Beth's family's shoes, would you like to be treated as they are by this school administration? Would you like to hug your grandchild, children, and see the confusion and sadness in their eyes where just six months ago, those eyes were full of joy and excitement? Would you ask this question as it could easily be you, your daughter, your son, it could easily happen to you? What is happening to Brian and Beth and our family? One last why, not why, but what? What are you hiding? What is in your, in all the taxpaying citizen school administration, what are you hiding from the public? What information are being fed to you, what information is being fed to you by this administration that you are not challenging? Why not allow an open hearing? A hearing where taxpayers who elected you could attend? Not a 9:00 AM meeting, a meeting when they get off work? Where concerned student parents, as I heard tonight, and teachers could attend without fearing the repercussions that they've been warned about for their jobs? Don't you owe that to your school district? Don't you owe that to your school district employees and all the county taxpayers? Remember, you are responsible. Again, thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you for being here. Okay, guys, good night. So, we have to go on. We do have auditors here tonight. So, with that, we appreciate you all being here. We'll move to a report of the superintendent.
Yes. In your packet, you have a note of appreciation. I also wanted to bring to you tonight, parent-teacher conference participation rates from October They are in your board packet under 5B. And I'm happy to report that we had great participation at Bloomsdale and St. Jen Elementary, with Bloomsdale having ninety-two percent participation rate and St. Jen Elementary having ninety. At the middle school and high school, we had good participation, with the middle school having forty-eight percent participation. The highest percentage was at sixth grade with fifty-three percent. And at the high school, we had thirty-eight percent participation, with the highest percentage, amazingly, at twelfth grade, at forty-four percent. So, that was, that was wonderful to see. I do encourage parents to contact the teachers and the administration anytime they have concerns. And if you'll look up at the screen, I was going to show parents and the public how to get to, do you see the mouse anywhere?
Yep.
There it is. How to get to the staff, the staff directory page on each of these websites. So, if you go to the school, we'll go to the high school, and you go to the explore button, and you click staff. When that comes up, we have every teacher's name, every administrator's name, every secretary, anyone who works in the high school here. It has their direct extension and their email address. So, that is the same on each of the different school pages. So, I'll just pull up the middle school and show you, it's the same process. You go to explore staff, and then here's the name and the contact number. And I will share with you that we also have an app. If you go to your app store on your phone and you look for St. Genevieve R2mo, it's going to take you, and you download it, and you'll receive push notifications when we send out a message. And you can also look up the staff directory directly on your phone. So, I wanted to share that, so everyone can see where that information is, is and how to get to information to contact our staff. Any questions on parent-teacher conference or how to contact staff? Okay. The next thing we need to do tonight, I want to let you know that we set pre-K and kindergarten registrations. So, mark your calendars. We're not accepting appointments just yet, but we will begin accepting appointments on Monday, February 25th. Pre-K and kindergarten registration at Bloomsdale Elementary will be Saturday, March 23rd, from 8:00 until 12:00. And St. Jen Elementary will be on Saturday, March 30th, from 8:00 to 12:00 PM. Anything else? Okay. And I'll continue to remind the public and to share that at board meetings as we move closer to that date. Up next...
Do you guys want chairs?
I need.
Sure. No?
Thank you.
Up next, we have principal reports. Who would like to go first? Do you have a website?
Well, I had pictures to go with it, but I'll just go ahead and talk about it. We've been really busy in October and November. The first slide, I think, I'll probably go out of order, I don't have any to read now. I was going to buy the slides. But we had Red Ribbon Week, the last week of October, and that was our Drug Awareness Week. And we had the Sheriff's Department and the Police Department come, and with the Drug Dog for the K2, 3, 4 students. And then our fifth-grade students came into the Performing Arts Center with the sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, and they had a speaker on drug awareness, and they really enjoyed that. Then we had Halloween activities. We had a Halloween parade, Halloween parties. We had Trump Retreat. Our PTO did Halloween on Saturday. And, I think, what else? Oh, I'll talk to you about this, that I have in my hand. We're doing something new this year. It's called Habit Leaders, and we're going to have a big ceremony. Normally, we nominate character kids each month, but this year, we decided we were going to go with the Leader in Me Habits, habit number one and two. And anybody in the whole building, like the cooks, custodians, anybody could nominate people that were displaying those habits. So, Monday night at 6:00, we're having a big Habit Leader ceremony. And I had about fifty students' names I was going to read, but I don't take up everybody's time. Just some of the nominations said, let's see, like, they went with a class mission statement, and one teacher said, "Our class mission statement is, we will be leaders by working together, trying our best, being kind, and having fun." And it said, "Jackson was a great role model for his, for our class mission. He always tries his best, and he is ready to learn each day. He comes to prepare for class and is ready to take on the day." And that was habit number two. For habit number one, I'm all over the place. That's okay. But I don't have a slide for this one, anyway. Habit number one, I'll read you an example of one nomination. It's being proactive. It said, "Sophia always has things signed and turned in on time. She works hard in class to get her, get her work finished. She has become a great helper to the students sitting by her. She is very kind to other students." So, we have forty-seven habit leaders that we're recognizing on Monday night at 6:00. So, you can come if you'd like. We had an awesome Veterans Day program. All of our student lead groups ran the whole show. The adults did not get up and say anything. We did have Ms. Sarubi and Ms. Herzog Anderson that organized it all, but all of our lead groups ran the show. They did the white table ceremony. They announced the names, they announced the winners. These are the winners of the essay and the coloring contest. You can see the names, I won't read all of those. And those are pictures from our Red Ribbon Week. That was Quinn Day, that was Mr. Kingery, and Mr. Bosler, and the nurse, and Ms. Anderson. And then, since I had twins, we were triplets. And then down at the bottom, the second-grade teacher, four triplets. Then Halloween activities, we always have fun with that. It was, since Halloween was on Wednesday, we kind of had a whole Halloween week that And then we had a family involvement night, the 7th of November, and it was called Escape the BLE Jungle. And we had seven different escape rooms, where there were puzzles and things that they had to figure out. And then, in each room, they got a puzzle piece, and at the end of the night, if they solved the puzzle, then they got a special prize. And it was really fun. It was the first night that I got to enjoy it as a parent, and it was pretty cool. So, I mean, I always see it from the administration side, but the parents' side was really fun too. So, that's what we've been doing at St. Genevieve.
Thank you. Well, and I was going to read off my own. Good evening, everyone. Many things at St. Genevieve Elementary were similar to Bloomsdale Elementary, were both elementary buildings and followed many of the same guidelines. So, I'll kind of go through our month, and you'll see if it was along with Mrs. Zussman's. One of the fun things I've been doing every month, our secretaries, Mrs. Jury and Mrs. Jokers, painted a chalkboard in the office over the summer, and they change it up regularly. So, November rolled around, and they put a turkey up, and then students, and parents, and teachers, people in the office would write, just kind of started writing what they were thankful for. And it's pretty, there's a lot of Dr. Pepper up there. I kind of know that people like Dr. Pepper, but, so it's really cute, if you happen to be in the elementary, come by and look at it. So, all right. So, every month, I try to put a learning and leadership slide up. We are working on goal-setting and leadership finders. That little girl is a first grader, and she's showing her writing spree goals. So, you can see her little purple lines are growing, so they're setting lines for whatever academic goal they're working on. She's working on her independent word writing, but the classrooms have developed a leadership binder, and one of the main parts is to set wildly important goals and then scoreboard your progress. So, our students are currently working on that, and our academic action team is a team of teachers who are getting that all in place and aligning it. The other thing we always, when you pop into classrooms in our building, you'll always see kids doing kind of hands-on word work. You know, it might be magnetic letters on a locker, it might be whiteboards, but we still do paper and pencil tasks, but there's a lot of other ways to learn. And I happened to walk by one day, these little guys were working on some vocabulary words on a locker. And then I have to give a little shout-out to Mr. Kingery tonight. He has our preschoolers doing so much great musical things, and this little girl is playing violin. So, they're doing a lot of instrument study, so I just wanted to highlight Mr. Kingery and what he's doing with our music. All right. So, we've started a thing at St. Genevieve Elementary, because, you know, we have a big thing in August for all our new students, but Mrs. Granger, our school counselor, and I talked last year, well, you know, kids roll in all year long, and we don't always recognize them, so we've started doing it monthly. So, we just had a new student breakfast for students that were new to us since the one we had in September. So, we met for donuts and had a morning together with the new kids. We always do our Student of the Month lunch, and of course, honor certificates, and like Mrs. Zussman, we honor them living the habits, and this was their habit celebration. And then we had a positive office referral for this little girl named Jordan Heb. She did men several acts of kindness and was nominated for a positive office referral. And then, some fall fun. We had a lot of fun stuff going on in the fall. We had a teacher's night, and we want to thank our local McDonald's for having us do that. We raised quite a bit of money, and that, those proceeds go directly into our student activities account for leadership activities. So, we want to thank McDonald's for a great night. We also did Halloween, lots of Halloween fun, and all the teacher teams always dress up, but I had to highlight the first-grade teachers here, because the day before, they had gone to the Cape Conservation Center and did a lot of hiking and outdoor things with our first graders. And then the next day, you can see, they came in, like, all, like, with dirt on them and leaves in their hair, and funny, like, like, outdoor, like, they'd been kind of, like, a little tussled up on the field trip in their shirts that I survived on, field tripers, and funny like that. So, it was cute, and the kids were, thought it was so funny. And then, we also had a family involvement night. We had a third and fourth grade family fun night, and we had a great turnout in the surveys. We had wonderful comments, that the parents really had a good time playing the various kind of math games with the kids. So, those were a few highlights. A few school pride things going on. We too enjoyed Red Ribbon Week. The fifth graders went to a different assembly, the one that the middle schoolers went to, and the little guys did the one in the gym with the local police officers and the Drug Dogs, and they enjoyed that, as always. The fifth grade class, oh, I spelled masquerade wrong, there's not an E on there. Okay, oh, good, thanks. It's rolled down. Anyway, the fifth grade had an awesome masquerade dance. The PTA and a handful of teachers really lined it up, and their behavior was spectacular, and they had a great time. Then we also have been celebrating successes in our building, and one of the things we did last week was, for our good citizens, our super citizens, we had an 80's dance, and they got to dress up in 80's clothes all day, and we had big 80's dance. And as a person that lived in the 80's, I think it's how funny how long ago they think that is. Kind of like when we dressed up in the 50's. And finally, down at the bottom, we're doing a lot of collaboration at the middle school with Mr. Oldham, and he brings the middle schoolers down, and they're doing flip-grade projects with the, with the fourth graders, where they design and do, it's a technology, it's a flip-grade project, where they work it out on paper and then do it online together. So, I think that's the last slide. Oh, nope. We too celebrate and have a big Veterans Day Assembly. The pack is full, it's standing room only, so we get about seventy-five people at our assembly by the time we put all the students and special guests in. And we too have coloring and writing contests every year with the VFW Auxiliary, 2210, and those are our, our students that placed first, second, and third, pre-K through, pre-K through 5. And considering we have about 560 kids in our building, that's a lot of, a lot of stiff competition, so these little guys really shined. So, all right, thank you.
Thank you. Well, we have also had a pretty busy month since I saw you last, but, but really positive days. We've got a lot to go through, so I'm going to jump right in and mention that immediately after I saw you last, we have Red Ribbon Week and Career Week in the same week. So, that was full of activities. On the Red Ribbon Week side of things, the assemblies, the visits, the guest speakers, Mrs. Huffman did a good job putting all that together and making sure that a lot of folks were involved, including our local law enforcement, county law enforcement, Mayor Haskler with a proclamation. And so, that was nice, because we consider that a nice community activity as well, because we're able to pull in people from, from all walks of life out in the community. Also had a lot of student helpers with her, so we appreciate that. The picture that you see there was taken right after our assembly, that Mrs. Dees referred to just a few minutes ago. On the right-hand side is one of the snapshots from Career Week, that Mr. Draper was primarily in charge of, and this is one of the classroom lectures. And there again, it was a good community project for us too, because we were able to bring in lots of local experts, guest speakers. We were also able to take some kids out specifically to the Perryville Career and Tech Centers, so they could see what kinds of opportunities will be awaiting them there once they get to high school. So, again, it was a very busy, busy week, but also very positive, and I want to thank the folks that helped put all of that together. I also want to talk to you a little bit tonight about lead groups, because now, you know, we are, we are launched. That was one of the things that we pushed off very early in the school year, and so now we've had some time to gain some traction, get some momentum, really get some projects going. So, I gave you a few examples here. On the left-hand side, there's the Ceiling Tile Group and some of the work that they've been doing. Right in the very center, Robotics. At the bottom is the Teaching Tech Group from, from Dr. Oldham, that Jerry mentioned. And on the right-hand side, the Green Group, the Recycling. But I also realized as I was putting this together, that I've never gone over with you what all of our groups are. So, I made myself a cheat sheet, and I just want to go over these very quickly. We have Spirit Club. We have one called All About Care. Board games, ceiling tiles, coding, fantasy sports, the Green Group, The Gotta Go Gazette, which is a one-sheet newspaper that goes in the bathrooms, it's called The Gotta Go Gazette. We also have mask-making, Peg Pals, Rock Band, Speak Geek, Student Speakers, that's a brand new one, where Mrs. Huffman has pulled some kids from Spirit Club to work with them, give them chances to practice, chances to exercise their voices in things like the student announcements, like leading assemblies, introducing guests, and things along those lines, Student Speakers. Teaching Tech, that I mentioned before, Dr. Oldham's group, Teacher Helpers, Walking and Yoga. And then also during the lead time, we also allow some of our groups that were already formed to meet, things like Jelly Beans, Science Fair, and Student Council. So, our lead groups are doing an excellent job and really, really trying to provide opportunities to meet the interests of every kid that we have. Hopefully, someone can find something. As you can see, we've had a ton of positive office referrals. This is not since the school year started, this is since I saw you last. These kids were all referred to the office by their teachers for doing something positive, a kind gesture, being proactive in their academics, doing something to help someone in need, all kinds of things. And as you can see, there are a lot of them there. Parents, if you're here and your kid is up there, let me personally thank you for bringing up that kind of student. We have an abundance of them, and I thank you for that. Just today, we awarded our Spotlight Award for this month to Mrs. Pelican, who teaches English and Special Services in middle school. And that smile on her face is what won her, her nomination this month. That is the same smile that's on her face when she walks in in the morning and says hello. It's the same smile that's on her face when she leaves in the afternoon and says goodbye, and for every up and down in between. That's, that's just who she is, and that's why her peers know. We have an abundance of them, and I thank you for that. Just today, we awarded our Spotlight Award for this month to Mrs. Pelican, who teaches English and Special Services in middle school, and that smile on her face is what won her nomination this month. That is the same smile that's on her face when she walks in in the morning and says hello. It's the same smile that's on her face when she leaves in the afternoon and says goodbye, and for every up and down in between. That's, that's just who she is, and that's why her peers nominated her, just because she's outstandingly positive, relentlessly positive, and really a bright spot in our school, and we appreciate her very much. Some other highlights over the last month, the Veterans Day Assembly, of course, and we want to thank Mr. Schweiss in high school for his leadership in that, and he also did a lot to make sure that our middle schoolers were involved. And I gotta be honest with you, that's probably one of my favorite days of the school year, because I feel like it brings us together as a community, because we're able to bring in so many people from the outside. So that's, again, one of my favorites, and I think Mr. Schweiss and the, and the students who worked on that assembly did a great, great job. We did have our first movie night in middle school just last weekend. We had maybe fifty-five, sixty students show up, had a great evening, had some pizza, watched a shark movie, and everybody just had a good time. It was, it was a very positive evening. The flamingo spottings are starting to fade away. I think they've gone south for the winter. We expect the flamingos to be back in the spring, so if you haven't been hit yet, don't give up hope. They still might come visit you. We're just waiting for the weather to improve after winter has passed, and they'll be out and about in the community again. And then, just not very long ago, we had our school play, Meet the Creeps, and Mrs. Otto did a wonderful job as she always does, and the students that, that were involved were amazing. They were funny, they were talented, they, they just really impressed that night. And so I want you all to know how much I enjoyed that, I hope you were able to go. If not, you really missed a treat, that was a, that was a great school play. So hats off to Mrs. Otto and to those students as well. Thank you all very much.
Alright, good evening. As you can see, I'm not Mr. Haney, so he's actually participating in the school play tonight. He is in Annie Junior, he's the police officer, I believe, so. For those of you guys that haven't had an opportunity to see that yet, sorry, I think tonight's it for the public, but our, our students are gonna get an opportunity to be able to hop in and see that tomorrow in the morning, so we're really excited for that. I'm excited to see what Mr. Haney's put into it, so. With that, with that being said, let's hop in and take a look at the high school for this month. We're gonna start with FCC LA. Dr. Etherington does a fantastic job with our FCC LA kiddos, and one of the things that she puts on every year is she gets in and she takes a look at a Thanksgiving Day food drive. And this year we collected over fifty-seven kits, and with that, it's basically a full wedge Thanksgiving dinner. And she spearheads this. You can see she turns it into a competition, and our students brought in over fifty-seven total dinner kits, including what would be for the, for the turkey and all the sides. So it's remarkable what she does. You can see the classes that participated in that and how they were able to give back to the local community. So we're very excited about that opportunity and what she does. Mr. Schweiss's class actually was victorious, kind of a funny story with this, some of his students in his advisory class were coming and were trying to draft other members of the, the staff and the administration that were not in advisory. So I know that we had a couple of students that came up to Mr. Haney myself and were trying to draft us into their advisory, so we would bring and help them win. I'm not sure if that's how we won or not, but Mr. Schweiss was the victor in the Thanksgiving food drive. We chose to highlight our both Rotary Student and Elk Student of the Month this month, Julia Ketting and Sam Solser. For those of you guys that know these two individuals, they are fantastic young people. They, they do an outstanding job for us at the high school, they're great leaders. And you can see Julia is actually standing next to Mr. Zeusman, one of our amazing faculty and teachers here at St. Genevieve High School. He teaches chemistry and upper level science classes with physics for us. And so we're trying something new with our Rotary Student of the Month. It's typically held every, or it's held every month on the second Tuesday of that month, which coincides with our club day in high school. The problem with that is traditionally it's been the senior counselor that's traveled with the students of the Rotary Student of the Month luncheon. The problem with that is Mr. Toomes is also an FTA sponsor. He's actually my co-sponsor with that, so he was pulled away for the first couple of club meetings, and he's like, alright, we gotta do something different. So we put our heads together, and we thought it was a neat opportunity for us to be able to give the student a choice in what teacher they would like to, to take them to the Rotary, and then also present them in front of the entire Rotary. So Julia chose Mr. Zeusman, and he is the first teacher that's been chosen, and that student has the opportunity to choose any teacher K-12. It doesn't have to just be in the high school. So she chose a high school teacher this time, but we're opening that up to the middle school or even the elementary level as well for those students to take those teachers. We have some French students that invaded the high school once again. Mrs. Guzels has been putting on this exchange program, where French students come and they stay with our students for, over the course of a couple of weeks. And this was done, again, this was the third year that they came this year, they were from Lyon, France this year, and it gives our kids a great opportunity to be able to experience culture from a different part of the world. And our, our kids really enjoyed and built lasting friendships. I know that a lot of them have already had conversations about how they can travel back to France, or how those kids can come back and they can interact once again. So it's a great opportunity for our kids, it's a great opportunity for our community to be able to welcome these students into their homes. It's a great opportunity for our school and our faculty and our students here to get to experience culture and what that's like in other parts of the world. So we were excited to see those, and you can see the, the students are paired up with their French students in that picture. We also had Terry Johnson, who is the president of the Missouri Association of Student Councils, come and visit us in November, and it actually just so happened that it was the same day that Dr. Etherington was in FCC LA, was putting on a guest speaker with Mike Donahue. And Terry came in, and she wanted to basically tour our, tour our facilities, meet with some of our student council members, so you can see that she had an opportunity to meet with some of our officers in student council, and then she had an opportunity to actually sit in on the assembly, and actually she requested to sit in on that assembly. She had heard Mr. Donahue speak before, and it was something that she was very adamant, that she wanted to stay, she wanted to take the time and to do that. And initially, when she said that she was gonna be able to come, she's like, oh, I've got twenty minutes, thirty minutes. And when she heard that he was gonna have an opportunity to speak, she said, I'm, I'm staying. I, I wanna be a part of this, and I wanna hear what, what Mr. Donahue has to offer. So kudos, kudos to our student council and kudos to her, but also Dr. Etherington for bringing in another fantastic speaker. I know Mr. Donahue's been here a couple of different times, and he's fantastic every time, brings a great message, and I think it's something that really hits home with, with our kids. And then finally, Senator Romine was actually in the building, and it's, it's kind of interesting how this all went about. Mr. Haney has been making a push to get Senator Romine in the building for, for some time, and it so happened that Emily Curtin is working on her doctoral degree, and she's in a class right now that deals with politics. And so both of them were reaching out trying to get Senator Romine, and with playing phone tag between the two of them, they finally got him on board, they finally got him here, and he had an opportunity to meet with our Principal's Advisory Group, which is a group that's comprised of Student Council Representative and National Honor Society Representative, our class president, and then we have an at-large representative as well. And so they had an opportunity to sit down and meet with Senator Romine for a little over an hour, ask him questions, and it really got the ball rolling for a lot of those young people, and they started, they started questioning, you know, let's, let's get in and let's meet with some other elected officials and some other politicians. And I had an opportunity to sit down with them this last week, and, and we started talking about Senator Romine and his visit and how beneficial that was to them, and they started throwing out some other names of individuals that they want to reach out and try to get to come to the school as well, even as far up as the governor. So they're really started, the balls really, and the wheels are starting to roll about who they want to, to come in and tour the facilities, but also to sit down and have that voice with some of our politicians at the state level and also at the local level as well. That takes care of the high school.
You know, with this, a group of our students, Mr. Oldham's class, who's going to Jeff City, and they're gonna be in the Rantender that day, and they're gonna show off their, their history, or, well, it's history, their history class, so that's.
That's awesome. Anytime they can meet with those politicians, make those connections, it's good for our kids.
I wanted to let you guys know, I've been out and about this last month, and I have not heard, I, all I could say is all the good stuff I've heard about our, our Veterans Day, Williamsdale, St. Gene. Done great jobs, they're all, they can't wait, they, they look forward to that, they really look forward to that.
I think they released it a little bit to the students, a little more to the students this year, so it was more student.
Yeah, the kids really liked it, they liked talking, absolutely.
It was excellent.
Well, does everybody know that you can see that this is the best part of our meetings that we have, so.
I was gonna share with Dr. Boyd, I've already extended the invitation to the governor, so fingers crossed. We do have some safety reports in your board packet, and the last thing I want to share with you is that today at noon, around noon, Desi announced that the State Board of Education has a new commissioner, they named a new commissioner. So basically what they did is they hired Dr. Margie Van Diven, and she will return to her position on January 2nd. So, Dr. Van Diven definitely has a passion for education and children, so, you know, I think we as educators feel very fortunate to have her back in that role. I would also like to take this opportunity to thank and commend Dr. Roger Dorson for his leadership and steady hand as interim commissioner. He's been wonderful over the past year. He has a true passion for education and students, just like Dr. Van Diven does. He's done an excellent job, but, you know, we're not gonna lose him. I really look forward to continuing to work, work with him when he goes back to his deputy commissioner of finance and administrative services, so we were all pretty excited today to hear that announcement.
Okay, we move on to unfinished business, the instructional program presentation.
Could somebody get a skate? So, I'm here to tell you a little bit about the Family and Consumer Sciences Department at St. Genevieve High School. And Mr. Haney had asked me to just talk a little bit about the different courses that we teach. The first one that I always think of is Family and Consumer Sciences One, we call it Facts One, it's a year-long course, and I always kind of think of it like learning to take care of yourself when your parents aren't around anymore, or when your parents might like to get you off the hair a little bit. We start in the fall with a unit on career success, and we research careers, and we do job interviews, and we, we look at why people keep their jobs. Talent Force came and spoke to the kids and did a really great job in helping them understand some of the successful behaviors there. Then we lead into management and consumer skills, making wise purchases, spending decisions. We look then at housing and transportation, how to choose a place to live, a vehicle to get you where you need to go. Clothing and textiles, we do the same kind of evaluation of clothing, what do you need to have in your closet to meet your goals? And then we do a small clothing construction project. You can see the top row, you can probably see a whole bunch of kids there, but they're standing there wearing their lanyards, which are kind of a battle to get kids to wear. But this year I ended up with some resources that I don't even have. We tried that one out, it was very popular. And what I liked the best about it, when we got done, everybody could use the sewing machine all by themselves with one project, so when we got to the second project, it went much more smoothly. Second semester, then we take a look at our own personalities and goals and values, character development, things like that, which leads into relationship skills, family and friends, communication, problem solving, conflict resolution. We have a parenting and childcare unit, which is interesting, I send kids out with, with their own baby bottles, it's a water bottle with their own picture on it, but every night they get a different, you probably remember, a different problem that they have to solve as a parent, and so that they're supposed to have a conversation with someone they think is a good parent and get some other perspectives on how to handle those situations. We move then into nutrition and healthy eating. We talk about food safety and sanitation in the kitchen, how to measure correctly and read a recipe and following directions and all those sorts of things. And I save food preparation from the very end, because no matter what kind of attitude you have about going to school at the end of May, you're ready to make pancakes, it's okay. So that's Facts One. You can see a lot of our different activities that we have going on in class, lots of teamwork, collaboration. One of our semester courses at the high school level is called Nutrition and Wellness, and we go a little further in depth with the nutrition and influences on our food choices, how to prepare food safely and store them safely. Then we actually spend a little more time in the kitchen, and we prepare grains and breads, vegetables and dairy. It's like I'm missing a little, there we go. And then we wrap up with mixed dishes and desserts at the end of that semester. We do a lot of competitions in there too, and we'll have our guest judges, who happen to be the teachers or administrators who are teaching that hour. Dr. Whisher's been our judge a couple of times.
Many times.
Yeah. The most fun course I teach, I like to call it, is foods. You have to have completed Nutrition and Wellness to take foods. It's also a semester course, and we review some of the safety and sanitation skills. Then we jump right in and talk about how you might need to eat differently based on certain lifestyle conditions or your age group, things like that. And then we cook a lot of the things that we didn't cook in the first class, eggs and beans, we look at fats and oils, meat, poultry, fish, salads, soups, and more desserts, kind of very popular. Maybe the most fun, I don't know, they're all fun, but Oral Foods is a relatively new class. We teach it once, as, once a year, it's a semester course. Again, we review the food safety and sanitation and preparation. Then we look at who eats what, where, and we start with the United States, moving on to Latin America, Europe, Mediterranean countries, Middle East, and then Asia. And the picture in the top is from our field trip, we, we live really close to a lot of resources. So it's worked out well that we go up to the St. Louis area, and we can barely eat anything else by the end of the day, but we stop by a French bakery, this was at a Chinese restaurant, we have to go to the Hill, you know, so we, we stop and sample some of the different kinds of foods that we've been talking about all year, and trying some new things, that's always an interesting thing to do. Child development, see, I said most fun, but we had toddlers come in last week, and man, if you have not ever seen, I had high school kids like trying to get in my room extra, which was kind of fun. With child development, it follows a really logical sequence. We talk about why people would study children, things you should think about before you become a parent. We look at pregnancy, prenatal development, childbirth, then infancy, toddlers, preschoolers, and then we look at careers and special situations for children. You can see Leila's got the empathy belly on, we borrow that from the health department.
Didn't any of the boys wear that?
Yeah, oh yeah, I've got some pictures, I did put those up, but yeah, the boys, the boys, yeah, they're excited to have new things that they didn't have before. You can see Miranda up in the top playing with some of our little toddlers. That turned out to be a really good day. Something else that is a little different with our department, we have partnered with Mineral Area College to offer a two-year program. It's essentially a way to get our kids a national cert, certificate, so that they're eligible for a little higher than entry-level positions if they're interested in the child development field. It can also result in them receiving up to twelve hours of college credit through MAC. There's been some changes to that program in the last couple of years, but the major components are two years' worth of online classes through MAC, but I'm kind of facilitating that, so it's, it's a blended sort of delivery. And also those students are onsite, a hundred and twenty hours a semester, and right now we have three students in the two preschools that we have. Yuri is one of our stars, you can see him up here in the top with the little one, and he's, I think playing tug-of-war at the bottom there. So that's one of our, I keep saying my favorites, they're, they're all my favorites. Personal finance, I think it's a lot of fun. We talk about financial decisions and goal setting and depository institutions, why all that money isn't on your paycheck when you get paid, and where those taxes come from, saving and investing, and then credit, spending, insurance, and consumer protection. And you remember FCC LA, you've heard about that a little bit. Any student who's had a Family and Consumer Science course is eligible to join the organization. We do a lot of community service, we travel a little bit, we try to have a little fun, build some leadership skills. And that concludes what I have to say. If anybody has any questions?
Thank you.
If you're a fan, go ahead and follow us on Twitter or like us on Facebook.
Dr. Etherington, I, I had a couple of the girls, I had talked to them about the classes, they, they loved that, they loved you, but they said that if it wouldn't have been for that class, they don't know what they do, they, they, they're not talking, you know, they're not real, they're kind of shy, and now they're just, they're going out and they're speaking about it in their games, and so it's kind of, it's kind of exciting to hear that stuff. And the food is always good. Okay, thank you very much. Next is set procedures for the annual school board election.
Yes, if you looked at six B in your board packet, basically what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna read the information because. I'm going to read the information because I want to make sure I don't leave anything out. So I'll read the information on the first side of six B. If you look on the backside of that page, this is the press release that will go out on November 28th and will go out again on December 5th. Okay? The annual school board election will be held on Tuesday, April 2nd, 2019. A copy of the news release is attached, as I just told you. The expiring terms for board members are Mr. Terry McDaniel and Mr. Richard Rudolph. A candidate shall file in person and in writing according to board policy and state law. Filing will begin on December 11th, 2018 at 8:00 a.m. and will continue during regular business hours of 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m., Monday through Friday. Filing will end on January 15th, 2019 at 5:00 p.m. Filing will not occur on days that the school district is closed due to inclement weather and on the following days of December 24th, December 25th, and December 31st of 2018, and January 1st of 2019. Documents necessary to file as a candidate may be secured in person from the superintendent's office at 375 North Fifth Street, St. Genevieve, Missouri.
Move to a go filing resolution. Be resolved that the Board of Education authorizes an election to be held on Tuesday, April 2nd, 2019, to fill two three-year terms as directors of the St. Genevieve Board of Education. Furthermore, the notice of the election and certification of the candidates shall be submitted to the county clerk in accordance with state statutes.
Do you have a motion in the second? I'll move in by saying aye.
Eric Bowser?
Yes.
Tammy Bowler?
Yes.
Joan Hoot?
Yes.
Jane Kirchner?
Yes.
Cameron Daniel?
Yes.
Arthur Reesinger?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven-o.
Next is the annual audit.
Yes. And here to, to do the audit from Clifton, Larson, Allen is Donna Doty.
Yes.
So I'm going to turn it over to Donna.
Thank you. Yes, my name is Donna Doty, and I am a director at FCC LA. And you, as the board, hire us to do an independent audit to work with the administration to do it. Basically, I believe in your package, you probably have the issued financial statements. So I'll just kind of tell you in a brief nutshell what you have in front of you. So again, these are issued financial statements. The audit covers several different parts. We have financial statements, single audit, federal reporting, Yellow Book compliance with government auditing standards, and then the very statutes. It's a big document. We start off with first the independent auditor's report. It explains who, what the responsibilities are, management's responsibility, as well as the exactity of the audit and the team. And we do, and I have to report that we have a clean opinion for the audit. And also, just to note that it is, just as it always has been, a cash basis reporting. So it is not vehicle, which is very similar to many and most of the districts in Missouri. And then, as you kind of follow along in the financial statement packet, the management discussion and analysis. And that, similar to other years, is just a comparison, kind of the story, the financial picture of the district. And it compares 2018 to 2017. So it's a good, it explains a lot of the information, the different funds that are used and so on and so forth. And then the guts of the financial statements starts. And one of the best statements in there, just the easiest and cleanest picture, is the statement of receipts and disbursements, changes in fund balance. And throughout this past year, the year ending June 2018, we ended the year with a positive net position, fund balance of thirteen point one million, which last year, the same comparative number was about six million. And that increase, a lot of that did result from line refunding proceeds during the year. And then there are different, different other financial statements within there that show different aspects of the numbers as well. And then we go on to the footnotes, and that is several pages deep, and that's all the required information as your cash basis. That just shows, the financial statement shows the receipts and the disbursements, but the footnotes go into a little bit more detail, required information, for instance, about debt, and then a variety of other required disclosures. And then, moving on, the supplementary information goes into, one of the biggest parts of that is the single audit portion, which is the work done relating to the federal funds. As part of an audit, we do calculations to figure out exactly what area, which federal program we need to test during the year. During the year, we look, for this audit, we looked at the title one, and there were no findings in that. And then the last part of the financial statements are made up of the Missouri reporting requirement, information that Desi requires in your financial statements, including calendar attendance, which counts, things of that sort. And again, there were no findings in that. So that's the big piece, the financial statement packet. We also, as a part of the audit, issue a governance letter as you are not part of the everyday going on of the audit. It gives a little bit more detail about some of the information as part of the audit, so I encourage you to read that. And we thank you very much for the opportunity to work with you. We were given, you know, we asked for a lot of information as a part of the audit, so we really appreciate your team's work to get us, get us that information and answer all our daunting questions and, you know, never-ending questions, I guess I might say. So we thank you.
They work hard for that.
They do, they do. There's, it's fifty pages of a lot of important information.
So you went through all financial statements and federal program, no findings, clean bill of health?
Correct.
And how long were you, say, working on that yet?
So we usually are in the field almost a week, and then we do a lot of wrap-up that we're not on-site for. So we have constant communication with Chris as part of that, and then it goes through our internal review process. And then the administration and Chris, you know, reviews it. And then we issued a final, I believe the date of the report is earlier this month, like early, part of November 6th, I think, of November.
And that whole week, everything super seamless, you get everything you needed?
We do, yep. I mean, if we don't, we keep asking, but yes, we, I mean, it's, yeah. I mean, Chris has done this many, many times before. And, you know, we send out a huge list, we call it Prepared by Client Listing. We have a couple of them actually, and we go through and we ask for a variety of information and, yes, everything we ask for.
Just one last thing. In reading through it, looking back at the end, we also looked at the transportation?
That's one of the Missouri, the standard part of, yeah, it's reported within the annual report provided by the board, so our financial savings cut out like a piece of it, and we have a report on that.
Thank you.
Yes, we get this well in advance, at least three or two in advance, because we go over it, we look over it, then if we have questions, then we go down and then they could come to you.
Right.
So just for anybody that needs to know that, we do get this.
Thank you.
All right. Well, that's so much.
I'll move to per the annual audit part of 2017, eighteen school year's presentation.
Do you have a motion in the second? I'll move in by saying aye.
Aye.
I move that the Board of Education holds a closed meeting with a closed record, a closed vote following the regular open meeting on December 18th, 2018, to be held in the R.W. Thomas Library, 715 Washington Street, St. Genevieve. The directors of the purpose are discussing and voting upon the following kinds of events: legal action, causes of action or litigation, lease, purchase or sale of real estate, hiring, firing, disciplining or promoting particular employees, proceedings involving the mental or physical health of an NFI one individual, scholastic probation, expulsion or retroversion of identifiable individuals, testing and examination materials, welfare cases of identifiable individuals, preparations for negotiation with employee groups, software codes for electronic data processing and documentation thereof, specification for competitive bidding until approved or published, sealed bids and related documents until the bids are opened, sealed proposals and related documents until all proposals are rejected, or any documents related to negotiated contract until a contract is executed, individually identifiable personnel records, performance ratings or records pertaining to employees or applicants or employers, records protected from disclosure by law, scientific and technological innovation to which the owner has proprietary interest, records relating to municipal hotlines established for reporting abuse and wrongdoing, confidential privilege communication with non-adjudication, operational guidelines, policies and specific response plans for preventing or responding to a critical incident, existing or proposed security systems and structural plans of district property, official records that identify security systems or access codes, records that identify and would not allow unauthorized access to or unlawful disruption or configuration of components or the operation of a computer, computer system, computer network or telecommunication network, credit card numbers, personal identification numbers, digital certificates, physical and virtual keys, access codes or authorization codes or use protect electronic transactions. I further move the notice of this meeting and attempt to agenda be posted as required by law.
Eric Bowser?
Yes.
David Bowler?
Yes.
Joan Hoot?
Yes.
Jim Kirchner?
Yes.
Cameron Daniel?
Yes.
Arthur Reesinger?
Yes.
Richard Rudolph?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven-o.
Move to go to closed session with closed record and closed vote after a short break.
Do you have a motion in the second? I'll move in by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.